I hope so. I hope it continues that way.
Director Ladeen.
Good afternoon or evening. Not sure when, when we get to switch back and forth now that it's staying lighter later.
Yeah.
Well, as Sheldon would say on the Big Bang Theory's preview meeting.
Evening to you all.
Oh, my goodness.
Kim, did you see those last two emails I sent you? So?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
Oh. Looks like I got to the big guy's table.
You're a big guy.
Yeah. Hi, Councilor Olson.
Hi.
Okay, let's get down to brass tacks here. What Oregon do UCLA won, I hope. UCLA won.
I usually don't like to see UCLA win.
Oh.
But in, in the case of the big tournament, I like to see Pac-10, Pac-12 teams win. I have to stretch my, my feelings a little bit.
Counselor Olson, at least tell me you'd rather see UCLA than USC.
Well, they're playing tonight as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'm wondering if Oregon State's gonna have to beat Oregon, Oregon again to be champs.
Well, it's done. They can do it again.
Yeah, they're on opposite sides of the table.
Yeah.
That would be a Cinderella season for sure if that, if the two teams even met.
There'd be a lot of plane tickets to Indiana, best of case.
Yeah, I'm really enjoying the tournament too, sure.
What time is it?
Five twelve.
We've got three minutes. Seventeen twelve.
Will the new commissioner be joining us?
She should be here.
Cool. I always like getting to meet new people. Speaking of, I still need to meet with, uh, council folk, Smith and Olson, and a few others, I think.
There's Commissioner, there's Chartier. Let me see. There's one commissioner there.
Juan, this is Marilyn.
Hello.
Would be happy to meet with you anytime. Just give me a, give me a call.
All right, cool.
That's how you get stuff done.
That's how you get stuff done. Yeah, yeah. I'll, we'll schedule something. I look forward to it.
All right, thanks.
Just anecdotally, I had a fabulous hour and a half meeting with Juan.
Ah, yeah, yeah. It was pretty good.
Yeah, we brought Brad. That was fantastic.
Yeah, you know what? It was just really cool to meet everyone. In, so I was a Rotary Exchange student when I was younger, much younger and thinner. But they had a motto, service above self, and everyone I've met so far, I really believe had a servant's heart, and it was just really cool to meet people that would engage in local politics, a bunch of weirdos, but good-hearted weirdos, I think. Juan, I want to invite you to join our Rotary Club. I'd love to come and hang out and chat. You guys are great people. Good work on Polio.
Well, we will, we're doing this for the money as people opine periodically that we're.
Please don't say that. I could just see the soundbite already.
There's Commissioner Newton, Commissioner Cummings. Okay. Commissioner Davis has joined us. Commissioner, Council Bartholomew is here. Wow, looking good. Let me see. Look at, how much time do I have left?
I think we're there, Mayor.
I think we're there. Is what time is, seventeen fifteen? I'd like to call the meeting to order as, can we start recording? There we go. I like it. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll pledge our leases, please, Matt. Is Matt here? Here he is.
Yeah, sorry. I have to run back and forth between computers.
Okay. I had to talk to somebody about that. Where's that?
It's gonna take a second. There you go.
There we go.
We've had justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Your Honor. I'll start with Commissioners. Commissioners Chartier.
Here.
Cummings.
There you go.
She's here.
Here.
Roll call.
Yeah, sorry, here.
Here.
Miave.
Here. Awesome pronunciation, by the way.
Yeah. President.
Samuels.
He is out. It's his wife's birthday. He messaged me beforehand.
Soriano.
Here.
And for the Council, Mayor Alex Johnson II.
Here.
Counselors Olson.
Here.
Novak.
Here.
Bartholomew.
President.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
Ann Smith.
Here.
One member absent.
Well, I have the honor of introducing number three, introduction of a new commission member. Robin Davis for, well, twelve, thirteen years, I believe, and she's here to join us this evening, so thank you very much, and well, say hi to everyone.
Hello, everyone. Hello. Glad to be here. Thank you for the appointment, Alex, and thank you for the, the opportunity to work with you on this very important topic.
Thank you. Well, good to have you. I think everyone, as everyone has a chance to meet with Robin, please gather some time with Robin and get to know Robin a little bit, and let's get to work. So I will then.
Before we get started, Mayor, may I please make a suggestion?
Yes.
That all members hit the little three dots next to their own video and rename themselves, so folks know what their names are for public record.
Perfect. The three lips is on the top right of your picture.
Hmm.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You see, you're, you're good. See, you're looking Greg, not to call you out.
Steph.
That's a heck of a spelling, Greg. Commissioner.
So, yeah. I'm not seeing the three little dots. I'm sorry.
So you had to hover over it with your mouse.
Oh, okay. Let's see.
This is like my twenty-third meeting of Zoom, so that does a while.
You know, I was just reading an article that Zoom has actually made a lot of money in the last year, understandably, and, and paid almost nothing in taxes.
They actually did pay zero in taxes.
Don't get me started.
Just almost, they did pay zero.
Commissioner Soriano.
Commissioner Soriano, I can take care of renaming your profile for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rock Holly. Okay, so the fourth item is continue discussion from February twenty-four, twenty-twenty-one joint meeting. Review of the Human Relations Commission, current duties and responsibilities, and discussion of the commission's future role facilitated by Dr. Greg Hayman. So, Dr. Hayman, I will turn it over to you, but first I'd like to make a statement. I was, since this last meeting, I was thoroughly impressed with the number of people making appointments to get to know one another. I simply enjoyed every one of my meetings. I met with every commissioner, and I learned a lot about them. I hope they learned some things about me, but it was something that was really important to me, that everyone at least sit down with someone they didn't know, get to know them. So I want to thank all of you for doing the homework. I think it's gonna yield some results and some positive relationships going forward, and I think we're all gonna be better together because we went together, went forward together. So, thank you very much for that, and let's get to work. Dr. Dr. Hayman.
Well, thank you. I, I guess I had the impression that Peter or Kim were going to do some stuff first, but I'll, I'll do whatever you tell me to do.
So, did Peter have something? Peter, please jump in or Kim?
No, I, I, you know, I defer to my mayor, but I will just say that, that I think that last week's, or the last meeting that we had was quite successful in generating some very good comments that Dr. Hayman took, took with him, synthesized them, and he came up with a, with wording for our charter that is simple but very impactful. And I'm hopeful that we can build on that and get moving, and on Wednesday night, the council will be able to accept that as a revision to the chartering language for the, for the commission, and we can get moving towards actually getting the work of this commission done. I know Kim is eager to, to get to work and get the commission seated, and you know, you have some housekeeping to take care of in terms of a chair and so forth, and then they need to get to work and, and do the business. So, Greg, just let me take the opportunity afforded now to thank you again for all the work you've done and put into this. So, much appreciated.
Thank you, Peter.
It's a privilege to be a part of this, and let me try and summarize and where I think we are, and then how I, I hope we can move forward today. I, too, want to thank all of you who provided comment, input, I think, honest expression of your hopes for the city of Albany and specifically for the work of, of this, this commission, and there are, I think, a diversity of, of hopes for this, but I also heard a lot of commonality, and it was, it was in that sort of summarizing and gathering all of, of your input and then some subsequent conversations that I tried to, tried to offer some ideas about how you might represent that in a revision of your charge charter for this, for this commission in the hopes that we'll have something that the city council can adopt, and that would be a huge important step to help us move forward in this work. I think, and I'm not able to project anything, so I'm not sure if we have a copy of that proposed revision. Is it, do we?
It's on the agenda.
Okay. So I think, I think we're hoping for is, say, the first part of this conversation is for some, if you have comments or thoughts on, on what is proposed. Yes?
Dr. Hayman, would you like me to project that, to share that screen, that language?
I think that would be great. Yeah.
I'll get to the questions, okay, everyone. Commissioner Cummings, Commissioner Newton, Commissioner Miave.
Just having it up on screen.
There it is.
Can you make that bigger, Peter? You shrink that toolbar on the right side as well. The mouse is still being worked.
There you got it. There you got it. So again, we're trying to move forward with a sort of, I think, a statement that tries to encompass the kinds of input that we received at our last meeting, and then I think once we have that conversation, then we want to focus the majority of our time on beginning to delineate the kinds of specific activities that would be a part of this commission's work, because I think that's another part that we would like, like to have clarified moving forward as well. So, so first, sort of feedback, comments on, on where we're at in terms of a revised city, what do we call these? City, city codes, okay?
So, so at first, the first thing I saw was Commissioner Miave.
Um, I'll, I'll get into it a little bit later, but my original intent was to ask for exactly this, for it to be, so that we can all review it, but I'll let some others speak.
Okay. Commissioner Cummings, next.
Yes, I would like to also start off by saying I want to thank Matt Harrington especially for contacting me on the website, so I really want to make sure that we give credit to where, you know, where credit is due. So I just want to give, you know, a big thank you to Matt for reaching out to me and working so fast on the website for it to be available in Spanish. So, Matt, thank you so much. I can tell you that we greatly appreciate it, so I just want to make sure you are recognized for working on it so fast. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Commissioner Newton.
Hi, so, thank you, Greg, for proposing these changes. I did not know that we were going, would be allowed to propose any changes to our charter, really, or else I actually have a draft of a, of a new charter that I've been playing around with just for fun, because that is just what I like to do. I feel that words really matter, and reading the new words, specifically, so, you know, the Human Relations Commission is established by the Albany City Council to foster and support an intentionally inclusive community. That sounds good. Expand the foundation of what we share in common by embracing the richness of resources that are afforded us through, through our diversity. I feel like that murky things, murky, is that, I'm not sure if I'm using the right term. It isn't as strong of a statement or purpose, and I feel like it, it gets away from what, what our purpose is and kind of makes it a little, a little milquetoast, you know? I feel like, what even does it mean, what, what does it mean by embracing the richness of resources? Can we get a definition of these richnesses of resources? I really feel like we're missing a lot. When we go, we, we take out strength and connections within Albany's diverse community by being committed to the philosophy of inclusion, equal opportunity, fair treatment for all residents of Albany, and promoting harmonious relations among the citizens of Albany, you know? I, I feel like we're, we're really copping out and not standing up for, for what are our true, true messages. So that was my, my, when I, when I read it, I, so those are my two cents.
Appreciate that.
Now, Commissioner Miave had something.
Yes, and part of our homework of the last time we met up was to get to know and speak with the other commissioners. One of the things I asked everyone was, what do you see as the purpose of the HRC? And in a, what I heard were mostly two, two things. The first one being be involved in the community and showing inclusiveness and unity and, and how diverse Albany actually is. Cool, right there with you. The second part that I heard from some of the other commissioners was they wanted to be an avenue to maybe be a link between underserved minority populations to the city council so that they could have their, their voices heard, to be almost like a conduit for issues that may not fit nicely into any one category, but are generally issues from underserved communities. I think that is an important facet that I myself would think is a important job for the Human Relations Council. I don't see anything, any, any kind of verbiage regarding that here, but it's certainly something that I think would be important to maybe have a discussion about.
Thank you, Counselor, Commissioner Miave. I had Counselor Johnson first, then Counselor Kupczynski.
Too many buttons. I had to, I had to lower my hand, and then I had to unmute, so just a second. Um, I guess, um, you know, if we're gonna dissect it, foster and support an intentionally inclusive community, I don't understand what that means either.
So is this just an open session? Because I'd love to answer your question. I mean, from a, from a perspective of a commissioner, I'm not quite sure what the rules are in.
So let me, let me find out, Dr. Hayman, what he'd like to do, because he is facilitating the discussion. So, Dr. Hayman, what would you like to do here?
Sure, certainly I'll, my job is to support you as, as a city council, and so I take my direction from you, but I think there's an interest in providing a conversation that informs a decision that the city council needs to make with regards to the stated purpose of this, of this commission. And, you know, some wording has been offered to you. You don't, it can be something, certainly what you accept or choose to do can be significantly different than that, or you could choose to say where you are. I think Peter, your city manager, I think, early on, it indicated, maybe you don't change anything. But, but I think it's really important that the city council make that decision in the context of the kind of input that's been, we've gotten in the last meeting and, and perhaps some review here as well. I would prefer that we not replicate what we did last time. And so I think there's a point at which you, as counselors, need to, need to let me know, do you feel you have enough information either to make a decision or to sort of think about changing the process, so we can move on to the next step, which I think is something Mayor Johnson, you've certainly indicated an interest in having some conversation about. So what does this commission actually do in service of that purpose statement? So?
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. It's, you know, I just didn't think we were gonna make any decisions, and that is up to the council, you know, as, as an end result, so I appreciate it.
So, so I would like the commi, commission and the council to work on the language and, and come up with language we all can agree with and support for the purpose of this organization, for this commission. I see Commissioner Davis, I'll be just, just a second. I will, I would like to have that language done before we start activities towards the next steps. So I'll get Cap, Commissioner Davis's information, and then Counselor Kupczynski was next. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis first. We've heard him. Share our hand up. What, Commissioner Davis?
Hi, yeah, so I haven't had the opportunity or the benefit of the last meeting, the discussion with regard to the charter, but I just wanted to add that I thought, in just looking, comparing the two statements, just coming in cold on this thing, it does look to be a weakening of the statement from, from inclusivity, equality. Equality is a great, you know, language to have, so I'll, I just will leave that comment out and look forward to working on the language with, with everyone.
Thank you, Counselor Davis. Commissioner Davis. Counselor Kupczynski.
Yes, I'll echo a little bit of what Commissioner Newton mentioned earlier about words do matter. So my first thoughts when reading this a couple days ago, the new proposed language was, what was the per se inherent difference between it and what the previous message was? And I came away with saying, I'm not sure that I really like the previous charter language, however you want to call it, but I think the issue to me mainly is the fact that, you know, words, they're nice, they're on paper, but they're absolutely meaningless unless we do put some action behind them and do something with them. And I can get to that later when we come up with some of the challenges and things on our next, one of the topics we have on our agenda for tonight.
So, Dr. Hayman, what would you like to do?
Any other comments on, it sounds like there's feedback that the, that the original language is preferred.
So Commissioner, Counselor Olson was first, Commissioner Miave.
Oh, yes, I don't know if we want to get clear down to the bottom of the page at this point. And I'm thinking that with a statement like this, if you don't have things that you're not supposed to do, maybe the commission could do almost anything that they would like to do, as long as it's along, along the idea of what we're trying to accomplish. But the last, the last sentence at the bottom of the page says, "The duties of the commission will not include," and I wanted to stress, "will not include the investigation or sanctioning of individual acts or unlawful or discriminatory behavior," though instead of focus on recommending community activities that may be expected to promote positive change. And that is a good statement, except that I'm wondering if we see organizations forming and becoming popular as we see on the news recently of racist, really, organizations that are forming, and if we see that happening in Albany, I would think the members of this committee or commission certainly ought to bring it to the attention of the council and the city. So, I'm wondering how ironclad is that statement at the bottom of the page? I don't have any feelings on that. I, if something is happening along those lines, I'd like to hear about it, see if we can do something about some, some of these pseudo KKK organizations that we see forming. Not here that I, that I know of, but certainly in Washington DC, there's a wide variety of people in that ilk on June sixth, or January sixth.
So, Counselor Olson, if I, if I may, if it's okay, Mayor, just a quick response to that. There were, there were two other revisions that were considered that aren't represented in this document, and I can go over them real quickly for you, and one of them is the one that you have, have mentioned, and it would be sort of the, the elimination of that sentence, that negative statement about what this commission would not do. And I know we had some conversation about that at our last meeting, or subsequent ideas that perhaps it isn't in the best form to, in a document that forms a commission to tell it what it can't do, but focus on what it should do. And so that's one possible consideration for you, that that sentence would be removed. The other was, and I, I don't have text to show you, I don't think, in two point two five point zero two zero, which is the criteria for, for consideration, the suggestion of an added phrase, and I'll explain why, that in addition that there would be committed to the philosophy of inclusion, equal opportunity, and fair opportunity for the residents of Albany and committed to the purpose of the Human Rights Commission as stated in the purpose statement above. I think, I think there is some historical concern that, that perhaps we end up with people on the commission who end up wanting to talk more about its purpose and how to achieve its purpose, and if we were explicit in identifying the criteria for employment, that they would be people who could be committed to whatever purpose you agree to in this document, that that might help with that in the future.
So, Dr. Hayman, thank you for that. Could you please, if you see somebody with their hands up, go ahead and take the, take the lead and talk with them?
I would be glad to do that. So, thank, thank you, Mayor Johnson.
So I see a couple people with their hands up.
And I don't see any hands, so you. Okay. Yes.
There you go.
You're on mute.
Not for long. All right, so, again, back to wrangling cats. So I propose that the, the. again, back to wrangling cats. So I propose that the, the commission, myself and my fellow commissioners maybe come up with some wording and then present it to the council and to begin to work on an idea, because I think that there's a lot of different viewpoints of what the HRC wants to be and maybe what the counselors wanted to be. And I don't know about the, I would just like to get together with the other commissioners and to go, okay, this is what we would like it to be. Present that to the city council and then the city council can maybe trim the fat or make some recommendations. But on the last meeting, the city council said that they would like to have an empowered HRC. Great. Why don't we start, why don't we start with that empowerment and letting the HRC come up with what it believes its mission should be? And then, and then maybe, because right now, Greg, did you, you wrote this, right? Or you wrote this first draft?
I made suggestions and, yeah.
Yeah, and fine, the suggestions are what they are. I think it's a good starting point. I think it's important for everyone not to get hung up on that this is the exact wording, because yes, words do matter, but also the spirit matters as well. And I think the, the spirit of inclusiveness and unity are good things. That doesn't necessarily negate looking into other things. But that would just be my recommendation is that my fellow commissioners get together, get to know one another, write up what we think would be our mission statement and then present it to the city council and then have a further discussion.
We could do that at our next official meeting, because we can't meet as a quorum outside of public meeting. But I, I'm so down.
That seems kind of silly.
That's what you guys are appointed by the city councils, public meetings law.
But I understand what you're, I'm down.
So did you, you can't see everybody, Dr. Hayman?
Said it again, Mayor Johnson.
Can you see everyone?
Uh, I can see everybody who has a picture. Oh, there's two screens. That's what I'm missing.
Okay, because starts up here, there's four, three hands up right now, four. So Counselor Novak was next.
Yeah, okay, Counselor Novak.
Thank you. I have to, I want to pull up that language that we were referring to earlier. And first, I want to say that I think that that is a really great idea that Commissioner Mayavi had about having the commissioners get together and come up with something. And I'm disheartened to learn that that's not in keeping with the rules, like they can't meet together. And I, I know quorum supply to the council, but I,
No, 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 no.
Did I misunderstand? Okay, good.
Counselor Novak, do you mind, and Mayor and Dr. Hayman, do you mind if I jump in and provide a little bit of recent history?
Go ahead, go ahead, Peter.
Be great, Peter.
So the reason that we are doing it like this is because the council had expressed an interest in doing this. That they wanted to establish the purpose of this commission, so that, and they wanted to be on the same page and do it together. So there was no chance of, of ending up split apart and, and working at cross purposes as the sense was last year that, that, that had happened. So there's nothing wrong with the idea that Commissioner Mayavi brings up. But we are here because, because we're here doing it this way, because the council had expressed an interest in doing it this way earlier. So a change back to what Commissioner Mayavi recommends would be a change in what the council's intent was.
Right.
Okay. Could I complete my statement? Because I, I didn't actually do that.
Go ahead.
Thank you kindly. I just wanted to say, for what it's worth, that I appreciated elements of the statement that was put before us this evening. I'm referring to section 2.25.010, the purpose. I like the words intentionally inclusive community, and I love the words foundation of what we share in common. I really, that's my heart, is what we share in common. And I, I think that embracing the richness of resources, to my mind, I'll just say that to my sweet friend Stephanie, to me, I think that means the richness of resources, all of our differences afforded us through our diversity. I don't know, it just, that worked in my head when it was read. And when I first looked at the words, I thought, oh, that's, we're, we're kind of, we're being inclusive and we're, we're focusing on what we share in common while letting the richness of our differences inform that. And I, I, I really like those words and words do matter. And I just wanted to let it be made known that to me, I thought this got more to the heart of the matter than all the words we had before. I, I, I think sometimes the more words there are, the more room there is for misunderstanding. And that certainly has been my experience in life. So I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Commissioner Cummins was next up. Please take your hands out if you've already spoken.
Oh, one, yeah, thank you, Mayor. So one thing that I was thinking about, so these drafted revisions, I feel like they didn't really come to the HRC for a recommendation of change. I think, I mean, yes, it's great that you have these drafted forms and drafted language. However, I would like to know who was part of that drafting. Because when you have people's, you know, recommending these suggestions and they're all white, how can you, you know, how are all the voices at the table? So for me, it's just, I'm just wondering on that.
I like, I like to clear that up. So
Okay.
We, he was tasked, Dr. Hayman was tasked with coming up with draft language presented to us, that we would work into a workable purpose. So this is, this one person took what we said at the last meeting, came up with something for us to review. Now we're doing that now. So this is not the final stretch. It's an idea that you put forward based on what you heard from us. So we're, we're in the process of massaging that in language now. So that's what the purpose is.
Commissioner Cummins, I just wanted to clarify also, this, these don't represent, I'm, I'm, I am the neutral facilitator. So I'm not offering suggestions based on anything that I might or might not believe. I simply looked at all of what you input at that meeting and tried to find common elements and, and put it into words. That's all.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, because, you know, I just think it's important that when we look at this language that we, I personally like that our last, where it says strength and connections within Albany, that whole section that is crossed out, I like that. That's why I'm sad that it's crossed out. And that's why I wanted to ask that clarification of who made that decision to cross that out. And since we're here discussing it, I think it should come back. I think it's important that that is on this legal document, because I think it's important that we have something we can look back to and be like, no, it's this. So for me, I, I just want that language back. And that's what I would vote for.
Can you see, there's three hands up, Dr. Hayman?
Yeah, you see all kinds of things out there. And so I apologize.
Commissioner Newton is next up.
Thank you.
If it makes it easier for you, you can actually do use the little three dots over someone's video that doesn't have a video on, and then hide non-video participants, and then everyone that should be able to fit on your screen. If you hide all the non-video participants. So I also want to echo what Miriam said, and I know that it sounds really lovely. But without the words equity, the statement's uninformative. It doesn't give, give a purpose. And I do feel that, you know, we are held to public meeting laws. If we have at our next meeting where we can do an exercise, you know, as Juan suggested, I think it'd be fabulous. We can then, you know, kind of cut, cut, cut to the chase, we can come to, come up with something, propose it to y'all and work together and, and, you know, make, make this quick.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Do you have more? Commissioner Miyabi was next.
One thing I'd like to say is that getting bogged down into language, I am much more interested in promoting diversity and that sort of stuff. So the sooner we can get this charter out of the way, the better. One thing I would suggest to, I guess, to, to everybody is, there's kind of different ways of interpreting the Constitution comes to mind, right? There's strict interpretation and there's powers not enumerated therein. I'm kind of of the mind that if we can have a general purpose statement for the HRC, but really the work that we are going to take upon ourselves, I don't need it to be written down every single thing that I'm going to do, because the word, the way I see it, we're going to be doing stuff that's maybe going to be a little bit different. And I would like to push that envelope until a city council person tells me, hey, let's talk about this. Because I'd rather it be, I'd rather have a loose interpretation than a super strict one that says, you can do this, but you can't do that. But maybe that's just me, because I like to kind of figure out where the, where the boundaries are and what it is to be a commissioner on the HRC. So that, that's my just two takes. I look forward to talking with the other commissioners and getting their input on, on the verbiage. But I'd like us to get to work as soon as possible.
Mr. Johnson, that was statement, the question.
Oh, Counselor Johnson, okay. That's okay. I, I didn't, I didn't think there was another Johnson, but hey, you know, two of us are enough, right? First thing is, is I don't recall in the last meeting saying that anybody wanted to empower the Human Relations Committee to do anything. I thought we were just
I'll get you the audio clip. Don't worry.
That's fine, that's fine. But then, you know, what it says for duties and responsibilities, "The commission shall have the duty to make recommendations to the council and the city manager as outlined, inform relating as recommendations and whatever." And so, other than we get the minutes and the awards, if Human Relations Committee is doing something, I don't recall them ever coming to the council and saying, this is what we're gonna do. What do you think? And I think that's where the rub has been.
So they have done that.
I don't recall. But I, I do believe that it's, well, I'm just gonna ask a question. What, what do, what does everyone want of this? I mean, do they want to get, do the diversity thing and concentrate on the certain, you know, parts of the community? Or is it, or do they want to actually work together and make it better? I'm, I'm really not, I'm just not convinced that this is gonna do any good.
So I, I think we've gotten off track. I'd like to bring us back to center. Counselor, you had something. Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor, Counselor Kupczynski.
Well, this is jumping right to the last question to, we were addressing then, based on what Bessie was just asking. What I would personally like to say is that the commission, in fact, be very, very proactive in going out and researching and finding opportunities for bringing different events and different things to the city council, so that they can act, so that, so that the council can give their approval for. And even to the point that if the commission itself is obstructed by doing something like that, about doing something like that, that some of the individual commissioners could step out of their role and address the council from the dais as an individual and say, we need to do this because, and that's where I'm coming from on that.
So I had, I would like to, we have two, two more hands up that we need to move forward. Counselor Miyabi, Commissioner Miyabi.
Not, not yet, Alex. I think Bessie has excellent questions. And I think it would, it is up to the HRC to be able to answer those directly. And so that there's not any kind of, because what she's asking is the exact role of this meeting. What is the HRC? What are, what are its goals and kind of its mission statement? I think those are perfectly acceptable questions to ask, especially in light of the previous HRC making the newspapers in going, I, I don't want, I don't, I want the HRC to be doing good work and not be a source of contention. Sure, when it comes to issues of race and diversity and inclusion, sometimes the conversations are uncomfortable. And that is perfectly fine. I watched, as part of our homework, we, we watched the Black History Month on the Google Drive, right? And I was listening to it as a, as a, as a person of color, as a Hispanic, and going, wow, like there's just, I was just really impressed with, with, with that entire presentation. Now, I understand where you're coming from, Bessie, in that you want to know, like, what's the point of it all? I agree with you there. I want to take the time to sit down and talk with you, because your questions are valid to me. And two, I think I can answer them, because I want the HRC empowered, but what does that mean? Well, it's gonna take more time than we have here for me to communicate to you my personal beliefs in that matter. I would love to do that. And to me, that is like step one of unity and stuff like that. Everyone that I talked to as part of our homework, Matilda Novak had a wonderful idea for, for a multicultural event for Albany. Great, maybe the city can bring some money in and fix some potholes with it later. But she had a great idea. It takes time for us to talk with one another and really kind of open our ears. So I would love to sit down and talk with you, Bessie, about why an empowered HRC is a net positive for the city of Albany. And we'll, we'll schedule that later, but maybe, yeah, I just think that you have good questions and I'd like the chance to answer them.
Wow.
Anyone else?
So I, I, I would like also an opportunity for everyone to get to know Robin Davis. Those that don't know Robin should probably take some time to get to know her as well.
Yeah. Counselor Olson.
Yeah, I'd like to, I agree with committee member Miriam Cummins that the middle part of that paragraph, 2.25.010, I'd like to see that put back in, because I think that is getting at what people have been talking about here in the last few people who have talked about the, what we need to be trying to do. We need to have a community-wide getting to know each other. That's what I think we need to do.
And something else I'd like to see, thank you, Counselor Olson, is I'd like an education piece, where every, as an education component, where people from different cultures, people with different ideas can sit and talk about where they came from. Counsel, Commissioner Miyabi had a great thing about the story on the person, and they shared that in the paper, you know, and I think that's fantastic. I love that idea. You know, there's a lot of great ideas here tonight. I'd like to get some leeway, not leeway, make some headway on the purpose. If we need to come back, we need to come back. It's a process, you know? Does that make sense? I haven't heard from Commissioner Chartier or Commissioner Zoriano.
Commissioner Smith has.
Okay, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Smith or Counselor Smith? Stop it, Stephanie.
Counselor Smith.
I'm gonna provide a little historic perspective about where we came from and how we got here. The council was approached in 2007 with, by a community group who wanted to form a human rights commission. That was an uncomfortable concept for the council at the time. It remains an uncomfortable concept for many people. And there have been discussions, arguments, rehashings, fights over language from the very beginning. We got as far as we did to establish the commission through a group, a group of members of the original committee, a group who wanted to form the commission. Counselor Johnson was Uh, Counselor Johnson was on the um, work group that worked with them to, and, and city staff to put together an ordinance. The, the ordinance you see today, which has been amended one time uh, with the inclusion uh, language in it. The, the most recent language that Commissioner Newton is referring to. The language um, restricting the commission's um, powers, saying that the, to prevent investigations was compromise language so that the um, ordinance would be adopted at all. So there are, there are sensitive toes um, and sensitive hearts involved in this. And I think if we go back, if we're going to revise the language. Uh, I, I like the suggestions that have been made by all parties tonight and I understand where you're coming from. If we're going to go back and revise the language to make this more palatable to um, or, and more workable to the people who are currently on the commission, who are very different people from the ones who were the original commissioners and everybody in between. Uh, I think we need to have a work group of counselors and commissioners and staff. No more than six people. To look at that language and work on some compromises that are acceptable to both groups. Ultimately, it's the council's decision about what, if what's accepted and that can be, I would rather it be um, he quotes from the original ordinance, harmonious than acrimonious. We can do it. The, the, we, there are smart people in this room on this call. And people who want to get along and want everyone else to get along and want for this to be a diverse, accepting, wonderful community. I think if we start small and work together, I think we can get there. It, this has evolved over time and it's come back to where it started, but it's gone on in other directions and I think that's the, in my opinion, I'm only one of fourteen, um, that would be a good place to start.
Thank you, Counselor Smith.
You're welcome.
Dr. Heyman?
Um, I think uh, Counselor Kavinsky wanted to.
Good, good, Counselor Kavinsky.
Yes, uh, Maryland, by the same token, what you're advising is, is good in concept. My concern would be that we're doing, the HRC basically is for all practical purposes defunct while we're going through this process. And nothing is actually being accomplished. So I would, I would think that we might be able to leave things status quo, allow the commission to be reconstituted with the new members, which they already are, allow them to get on with their business. And in the background, we could have this sidebar grouping that could come back and bring information to us that is uh, workable through a, a smaller core team of people. But in the meantime, the commission itself can start actively doing things based on what still they're currently in the, in the language.
Commissioner Miyabi, thank you, Counselor Kavinsky, thank you, Commissioner Miyabi.
Uh, just, just a point of clarification, I, I've heard it mentioned uh, twice now. That uh, something has to happen before we can do work. Uh, there was a phrase you used, uh, Counselor Kavinsky, uh, what was it? Uh, we have to be seated?
They're, they are seated, they've been, they've been.
You are seated, so technically under the current rules without even being changed, without the writing even being changed, you're able to go forward. Based on what the existing language is, my understanding.
Okay, so, so if I want to go off and do something on my own, under the auspices of me being a commissioner. Which still seems kind of silly. You know, sure, Miyabi, um, but I could.
Correct.
In as much as any individual commissioner or counselor can do something on their own individually, as opposed to the group that they belong to.
So perfect. So I do like the idea of then getting it to work and doing a subgroup like Counselor Smith proposed. I think that we can beat this horse to death, but we do have a sitting commission. And I'd like to see work get started and we can come back with that, the, the group that Commissioners, Counselor, excuse me, Counselor Smith brought to our attention. And um, and get these fine folks to work. They're volunteering to serve the city of Albany. And um, I would like, and also it's about to be April and they have work to do, so.
Oh, our next meeting is supposed to be tomorrow.
So, so what would have to happen is you have, you have to select a chair and a vice chair.
Yeah, but I'm not sure if we have staff allocated for that meeting, Ken.
As Director LaDain's, your staff liaison.
Yes, but we also need to make sure that we have other administrative support. And so I would need to double check and we also need to make sure we're posting an adequate amount of time since it would be a public meeting. So that's something that I'll need to double check with um, our awesome city manager and city clerk. To figure out if we would be able to proceed for tomorrow or if we need to maybe schedule a um, a special meeting potentially. Um, we, I, I could look to see if that is the direction the council would like us to go. Um, but uh, before we end, I'll also need to make sure that I'm very clear on what the expectation is as we head into, to that meeting. So that, that way we're not spinning our wheels and bringing something back that council is not interested in.
Perfect.
Director LaDane, this is Holly Rotin. I can clear up everyone's calendars for tomorrow and let you know that tomorrow would be off the table. Uh, we have to provide public notice at least twenty-four hours in advance and our practice is three days.
Yeah.
I would suggest that we consider tabling the item for the agenda meeting tomorrow, Wednesday night, based on what we're talking about having happen going forward.
Yeah, I've, Greg Heyman here, just looking for sort of redirection. It does sound like the, I guess it's a city council decision, the counselors suggesting that um, that the, that the commission go forward and, and work on this and uh, present uh, we're first get going forward on the actual work of the commission, but at the same time uh, work on, on representing some uh, perhaps enhanced or uh, uh, language for, for how we define the commission going forward.
So, so my thoughts on it is, is that I, as a pro, professional project manager before becoming an insurance agent. My project teams had no more than seven on them and their reason for that is the lines of communication get quite complicated after seven. So I, I'm thinking now that um, it might be better for us as the council to do as Counselor Smith recommends, put together a small group of people less than seven or less than ten. And come up with the language they can bring back to council. And I think that does make sense, but I do not want to hold this commission up to getting their work started. We have, you know, a long year ahead of us. And um, Dr. Heyman can be a part of that process. It's just that I think with this body and the number of people in this body, we're not going to get as much done as we'd like to get done or hope to get done. Because we definitely have people that like some of the new language, people that don't like the new language or like to see a combination of both. And so it's just a matter of turning commission loose with their director, their staff liaison. And um, and get, get things started. And then we can, as a council, um, take a look at that language that, that small group comes up with. You know, and then we can vote on it or move forward with it and then go from there. Council, what do you think? Council?
What you said.
Agreed.
Counselor Johnson? Counselor Bartholomew?
I entering what I, I make, I want to make sure that I understand the uh, commission that will be doing, working on the purpose statement and that's a co, combination of, of counselors and commissioners. And that's going to be separate from the Human Relations Commission meetings.
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor Johnson, Counselor Johnson, do you have anything?
Not a thing.
Are you okay with the next proposed path?
It's going to happen and you know, I'm just really um, concerned that I think the idea of the mission statement is good because no other committee on the whole city, you know, council, the ci, the city um, of Albany has this much problem getting their tasks, you know, I mean, they just understand what it is. This one seems to want to do things totally different. And I just, I thought they were an advisory committee and that they would just uh, actually um, take in uh, i- if somebody has, you know, has an issue that they, that they don't feel comfortable coming to the council for. They can go to the commission and then they come to us. I mean, I, I think their, I think their purpose is way too broad.
So, so the thought would be then is letting, having the, the group, subgroup put together, uh, would, it may, it may not even change. You know, so it, that subgroup would define that, bring that back to us for approval or, or change, if we need to make a change. I think we should turn a permission move to get, get to work and then they can come back to.
Yeah, because the, the commission is, is, was put on hold until the changes were made, so changes.
It was put on hold until everyone was seated.
No, uh, they were actually uh, put on hold until it could be revised or uh, reissued, but that's fine. The, the committee sounds good.
Council, you're okay with that?
Yes.
So it sounds like everybody's okay with that?
Right.
Okay, so Dr. Heyman will be, Kim, Doc, Director LaDain will be reaching out to the, to the commission and getting back with us on the next steps and we'll go from there. Yeah, Director LaDain. Let me, let me get Commissioner Miyabi first and we'll go Director LaDain.
Uh, sure, I was just going to ask, uh, would, um, is it Dr. Hammond?
Sure. Greg.
Hey, if I paid that much in school, you'd be calling me doctor. Would you be? Would you be facilitating the talk? I think that uh, like with, with would you be involved in the process because you, you built the first draft? Would you be willing to assist with getting the wording right? Because uh, I'm, I'm no wordsmith. But I think something that if, if you're able to get the input from the fellow commissioners and maybe draft it into something that's sounds better than whatever I would come up with or, you know, just put some polish on it maybe.
Well, I, I, I serve at the pleasure of the city council, so uh, uh, in, in whatever way they would choose to have me involved, I'm, I'm very willing to help, so.
Here, Peter, you had a comment?
I was just going to try to keep uh, Dr. Heyman from being on the hook and say that he's very much a volunteer. Uh, he's done this out of the kindness of his heart and again, I appreciate him, but I don't, I don't, if he's willing to continue helping. I think we're fortunate to have that help, but I didn't want him to feel obligated, that's all.
Are you comfortable with that, Doctor?
Sure, again, it's, I, I will serve at your pleasure, so.
Thank you.
It's like Maryland has their hand up again.
I know, I see her. Oh, Dr. La, Director LaDain had her hand up first then.
All right, so this is just to help me clarify. So instead of the uh, HRC going back and drafting themselves, instead there's going to be a small group that's made up of staff, counselors and commissions of no more than seven people who will develop the language. Am I correct in that is what is happening?
And Dr. And Dr. Heyman will facilitate that.
Awesome, love it. Are we able to determine how those seven members, because I'm sure there are lots of folks here who would like to participate, how those seven folks are going to be selected?
You're killing me.
I know, I've got two more questions after this, I apologize.
So, so.
One volunteer already.
We can ask, so we have one volunteer commissioner.
I'd love.
No, not, not me, but station, Counselor Bartholomew volunteered.
Okay, so, so let's do this. That's way more questions than I was expecting tonight. If we could come up with a process or volunteers system um, by Wednesday evening, I think that we could talk about it during uh, during the meeting.
Okay, so we'll revisit and get the names of our small group on Wednesday.
Correct.
And then between, once we get the small group, we'll meet between now and theoretically a month from now to start working on our language. Um, abiding by rules and regulations for public meetings. But until then, we are not restarting the HRC regular meetings, um, because we don't have the meat to move forward with. Or are we going to have our April meeting where we just elected chair and a vice chair? And adjourn? Um, I'm just trying to figure out what the next steps are to make sure I'm, I'm not missing anything.
So let's, I, I hadn't gotten that far. Uh, Peter and I haven't talked also, neither I, you or I. So let's have, let's come, I'll, I'll see Peter tomorrow morning if you'd like to join us or actually Thursday morning, we can talk about it there. Um, I've got seven hands, three hands. Uh, so let's, Thursday morning, let's talk, um, Counselors, meth, I mean, excuse me, Counselor Johnson.
Okay, yeah, I just want to say, I think there's a little confusion for uh, what we're saying about uh, commissioners can't meet with counselors and that. Like the, I, I don't think, you know, uh, new people don't understand that uh, if you have, like counselors, if we have more than three in a group, it's a public meeting. And that's why we can't all meet, you know, just to have dinner or something like that to talk it out. And I think that was a confusion there where uh, we can meet one-on-one, there's no problem there. But I could hear the confusion and I thought maybe we should set that straight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Uh, Commissioner Newton?
I have two questions. Um, would you like us to attend Wednesday city council meeting um, to, when we determine who would be going forward and helping with this new little?
Yeah, we'd love to have all of you, everyone, everyone attend the city council meetings.
Okay, um, I also wanted to say I would love to be involved, you know, I do.
I know you.
Um, and then also Thursday morning meeting, would you like me to come as well?
So that's just, that's just me, Peter, uh, Director LaDain.
Okay.
I, that's my standard Thursday meeting with, with the directors and, and. It sounds like um, we've got a plan to move forward. And I'll go back to the agenda. So just so everyone is clear, we know this is going to be a complicated process. I think everybody in the room did. So let's be optimistic, we're going to figure it out. And we'll figure it out, right? And so um, I moved to adjourn the meeting, I'm going to adjourn the meeting now to get back to your families. Thank you all for attending and put in the work and our conversations this week or since our last meeting. I think we have work to do, but please take a moment uh, out of your time before our next meeting and get a chance to meet Robin Davis. Uh, interesting background, interesting history in Oregon, a brilliant person that uh, I think you all will get to know and love and respect. So thank you, Russ, for your time, Gabe, staff, I appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Good night.
Good night.